I'll call this meeting to order. Tonight, we're going to be led in the pledge by Tequila Hudgens, a student at Thurman Francis Elementary.
At the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you. If we could have a moment of silence, I'd like to ask everybody to still remember Clay Riggs, a Riverdale baseball player that's been in Vanderbilt pretty sick here for the last, I guess probably two weeks. So if everybody could just remember him and their family. Thank you. Provo agenda.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Blair, seconded by Mr. Nickle. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Provo consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Holliday and a seconded by Mr. Young. Any further discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We did number six. Number seven, Mr. Odom.
Number seven is a spotlight on education. I'm going to ask Mr. Tom Delbridge, principal of Siegel Middle School, to help to introduce who's doing the presentation, hip hop art and music collaboration today. And Mr. Delbridge also, they had a Make-A-Wish presentation at Siegel Middle today. And I assume that went very well.
It did. It was a blessed event today as Siegel Middle Student Council, over the past two years, did some fundraising activities and collected enough money through the school-wide effort to be able to grant an entire wish for one of our members of the community, a little four-year-old boy, whose wish was to go to Carsland in California. And we had an assembly this afternoon. It was, I think it was a blessing to all of us. So appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Odom and members of the board. I want to take this opportunity to thank you for having the spotlight on education. You guys have blessed the middle schools especially with strong exploratory departments, which are a great addition and work together with the academics. And the two teachers I'm going to introduce have found unique ways to not only promote their strong programs individually, but have a strong collaborative effort with each other and across other subjects. So I'm going to let them share what they've been doing in their classrooms. And they've been sharing some of their activities with some other systems. And I thought it would be a good opportunity, they felt like it would be a good opportunity to share what they're doing within our own system. I think you'll be proud of their efforts. Ms. Derryberry and Ms. Gray, the art and music teacher, Siegel Middle School.
Thank you, Ms. Blair. My name's Alexis and I am the music teacher at Siegel Middle School. This is Ms. Amy Gray. She's our art teacher. And as Mr. Delbridge said, we have, we've been hired by Metro. We've done a few educational consulting things with them as far as what we have come up with, the history of hip hop and using that to teach our standards. So we're just going to talk to you very briefly about what we've created. We came up with our collaborative class and it was a solution to a problem. When the middle, when we went from six-week grading periods to nine weeks, we both rejoiced. We were so excited to have nine weeks, nine glorious weeks to teach art and music.
That's right.
And then Mr. Delbridge called us in his office. And he said that we would need to split our nine weeks with another elective teacher. We cried, but then we decided it was, where he was coming from was excellent. He wanted our students to have all of our exploratory classes. On nine-week rotation, they would have only received four. So now with the collaborative classes that we're doing at Siegel, every single student gets all of the electives. Very, very important. So a really cool thing came out of this and we created a collaborative art and music class. The hip hop, history of hip hop was our second collaborative effort. Rap is something you do and hip hop is a way of life. And that was said by KRS-One, who is a hip hop activist and emcee. Hip hop is defined as a culture that was born from youth's reaction to their environment. And that came from Jeff Chang, who wrote a wonderful book called Can't Stop, Won't Stop: A History of the Hip Hop Generation.
And what we found when we did this is that even the kids that aren't really into hip hop, they saw a way to learn through it. And that's really what we want to try to do, is we want to get different ideas to the kids and show them how to learn through these ideas. And when we can do that, we'll be able to put children out there and people out there in the workforce that are creative and they're thinkers, not just, you know. We see the value in tests, but we also see the value in creating people that can think and create things.
It was also very relevant to the kids, so they enjoyed getting to hear the history of hip hop. And it's very interesting, we're not going to go into it, but it is super interesting. Old-school hip hop started in the 1950s and went through the 1990s. Through that was born the four elements of hip hop. Emceeing, which means master of ceremony. Deejaying, disc jockeying. B-boy, B-girl, which is a dance element, and then graph art. There are some negative things with older hip hop or newer hip hop, excuse me, but with old-school hip hop, the focus is really on socially conscious music and socially conscious art. And so we focused on the socially conscious side of the history of hip hop.
Because the history was, because they're in a turbulent time and a lot of our students have this type of turbulent, you know, they come from homes that aren't perfect, just like many of us don't, and there are issues that want to be expressed. So we took that idea and then taught our subjects through that.
And on the music side of it, we dissected socially conscious music, looking for patterns in lyrics such as metaphor, imagery, and alliteration. Students selected a socially conscious issue, and it could have been a school issue, it could have been a teen issue. We had many works on dress code. We had many works on cell phones in school. But the students had to then select a socially conscious issue that was personal to them and compose a hook, which we called course, and a verse. Students then used traditional Western notation, which is part of my standards as a music teacher, to write music and record there and produce their music tracks in the music lab, which we're very lucky to have at Siegel Middle School.
And that was really great because they got to see music in a different light. Some kids got to use things from their own life to create their music, all while using the standards, which we of course love to have. Now on my side, oh.
Sorry, I snuck a picture in without telling you. This is just a picture of one of our Mac labs that we have in our music room. We've got 16 iMac computers in our room and we have 16 MIDI controllers that the students can actually compose their own music, whether it be hip hop, whether it be classical. So they are getting to see not just the musical part of it, but also a production side of it, which many of them may go into music producing. We had the students create their own hit and their own lyrics, and then they produced that within this program called Garage Band. And we're going to just show you a real quick song that some students wrote. It's called Math, Science, Social Studies, and it's about getting good grades, but yet balancing everything that you have, being social and also being on sports teams. We were really impressed with what the students composed. And I've got the lyrics up there for you to see them. There's a little bit more to that, but how awesome.
Yes.
I mean, those are amazing lyrics and they're being positive. And that is one thing we told the students, that it needed to have a positive message. You couldn't, if you're going to complain about the dress code, then you need to come up with a solution to it. A lot of the kids also wrote songs welcoming sixth graders into our school and how to be successful at Siegel, so that was exciting. Amy's going to talk very briefly about the art side of it.
So for the art side, which is graph art, we all kind of have this feeling like, oh no graffiti. And I was a little nervous at first, but we really talked to the kids about why it's vandalism and then how it's moving into the art world. I even showed them the Tennessee laws and made it like a whole little teacup review of how they could get in trouble if they actually go out and do this stuff. But we learned like just the basics of my standards, like the color, the line, and what you would see in the graffiti. We did two projects, but the project that went along with the socially conscious art, they took their issue and then they made a piece of art about it. And a lot of graffiti is socially conscious art. So anyway, the students used these issues to create a multimedia piece. And what I mean by that is they didn't just paint it. We did a collage and then we image transferred, we painted, we stenciled, we did lettering, we did masking with tape, we did some drip techniques. So it was all within legal, street art, you know, style. And the kids really, really responded to this, especially since they had so much previous, you know.
Invested.
Yeah, they had it invested from the music class and then they had something they wanted to say there visually. So I've got a couple of examples. They're small, like you can see here, but this one's done by a seventh grader named Noel and it's about rumors. And you can kind of see some of the techniques and things, but they were able to choose images that they thought had to do with this. So we're using symbolism and of course, it's all their own thoughts and feelings about it. Then you see some of the kind of graffiti style, like with the drip techniques and all that. So and they're on these little boards, you can see she's holding them up here. These little boards here are the size of it, so.
And their artwork had to go along with their song.
Yeah.
So we tried to really conduct it that way.
And then this one is just, you know, this is, not everybody's into their own teen issues. A lot of them went with more of a world issue or a national issue. And this guy did his about recycling. And you can see there the images he chose, very different. He worked a lot more with repetition and he had, you know, everything in the image turns backwards, so he's got his Duracell battery up there backwards, but he used different lettering. And you can really see some of the style and technique that he was able to achieve. So that's kind of what we do. We kind of come up with an idea that we can both, we can both show and we try to show the students both sides of it. And you would be amazed at what the kids, they want, they want it. They want more of it. They want to know how it all works together and it's really exciting.
And we've enjoyed the past two years doing a collaborative class. So they'll spend two weeks with me and she'll have her students for two weeks and then we'll switch. And we make sure we align our curriculum to where they then have to apply what they've learned in art and music. And it just makes it such a rich curriculum and we get to get so deep into our subjects.
That's right. And we have lots of plans for more of these collaborations, so we're very excited to show you and talk to you about them today.
Thank you for your time. We appreciate it and thank you so much.
We appreciate what both of you are doing. Any other board members have any comments?
Well, I'm really glad to see you collaborating and putting it together for the two classes. I think it helps certainly the arts side, the visual, and then a little bit of performing arts and all with it too, the music.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We do appreciate, Mr. Delbridge, you're allowing us to.
And encouraging us, you know, to make good.
Out of opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number nine, we did, I had a report on that the other night. Did you get anything else, Ms. Michaels?
No.
From Ms. Vic.
She has not.
She's been out, she had things to do, so she should get to do that. But she said you're in good shape on time.
Let me back up just, I went over the visitors, I apologize for that. We've got two visitors tonight. Mr. Stephen Hunter. Mr. Hunter, I'll warn you, we've got that new machine up there and you'll know in three minutes. We used it last month and it works, so.
I just wanted to say regarding the Blackman School rezoning, I appreciate y'all's efforts. I looked at the agenda and you're talking about for the fourth graders going into fifth grade, letting them complete at Blackman Elementary, and that's close to my heart because that's, my son is in fourth grade, will be going into fifth, so do appreciate y'all considering that. And want to thank you. I know it was a hard decision, what you all had to go through and appreciate your time and effort on that. Also, I'm not sure how many folks are here from the Blackman community, but next Wednesday night, the planning commission is going to be talking about rezoning for another apartment complex in the Blackman School Zone. So here comes more population to our area that's going to overcrowd the schools even more. And I know that the city is looking at building a new elementary school, but just wanted to let anybody know in the audience that lives in the Blackman area to please be sure and attend that planning commission meeting next Wednesday night, April 3rd at 7:00 PM. And I believe that's on Vine Street. Thank you all.
Thank you. Mr. Rainwater, Jeff Rainwater?
I do like the new little thing here. It makes me feel like a sister general or something. Anyway, I wanted to commend the board and say thank you for having the courage to wait and see what the city was going to do and look at the picture as a whole so that we could disrupt as few lives as possible. And that's the main reason I came tonight. And I am concerned we won't be back here sooner than we really want, talking about this again with some of the density of it. And hopefully then we'll know more about how the community's growing in that area and have some more better projections on numbers and have a little better picture of how things are going. But I did want to stand here and say, you know, thank you for the effort you had. I know y'all drove through the neighborhoods and spent a lot of time on it and looked at us quite a bit, so, and listened to our concerns. And I wanted to commend you on that and to take the courage to wait until the city did announce it, even though it was, could also cause problems. But I do want to say thank you for going down that road. And like you said, we found out that there's probably more high-density growth headed our way. So rest assured, we'll do what we can to help that situation. So anyway, I just want to say thank you to the board and with this issue that has been kind of a hotbed topic for us in our area, so thank you.
Thank you. That leads to send to number 10, Mr. Odom.
Number 10 is our old business and the first is the rezoning for Blackman Elementary School. Enrollment at Blackman Elementary School reached 1,112 students at the close of the sixth month, which was February 25th, representing a growth of 106 students over the sixth month of last year. North City Schools is proceeding with constructing a new elementary school at Veterans Parkway and Highway 96 to be open for the 2014-15 school year. To accommodate anticipated growth at Blackman Elementary School, it is recommended that the Blackman Elementary area north of I-24 be rezoned to Brown's Chapel Elementary School effective for the 2013-14 school year. And we had a map, all of you had that the other night, it was part of what we considered initially from the rezoning, kind of over in the medical center, Parkway area is what we're talking about. So the motion, the recommended approval, the motion is to adjust the Blackman Elementary School attendance zone by moving the Blackman Elementary area north of I-24 into the Brown's Chapel Elementary School Zone beginning in the 2013-14. Blackman Elementary students rising to grade five and their siblings will have the option of continuing enrollment in Blackman Elementary School.
So moved.
Second.
Had a motion by Mr. Blair, seconded by Mr. Tackett, is that correct? Any further discussion on this? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number 11.
Substitute teachers. Staff recommends that the board award the contract for substitute teachers to advantage resourcing as the best and lowest provider for this service. Only two proposals met the requirements of our request for proposals. An advantage is by far the lower-cost service for the 2013-14 school year when you look at the pre-healthcare rates through December 31st, 2013, and the post-healthcare rates after January 1st, 2014. The contract can be extended by mutual agreement for two years after the 2013-2014 school year. Recommend approval, motion to award the contract for providing substitute teachers to advantage resourcing. And some of what you requested the other night, Ms. Barnes has provided that for you too. You should have a copy of that from the last bid, I think.
Heard the motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Mr. Tackett? Any further discussion on this? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number 12.
Courses offered addendum for credit in grades nine through 12, which is on tab three. Board of Education Policy 4.201 states in party, listing of addendum courses offered for credit in grades nine through 12 will be approved annually by the board. Recommend approval, motion to approve the list of courses for credit in Rutherford County Schools grades nine through 12 for 2013-14 as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Holliday, seconded by Mr. Young. Any further discussion on this? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thirteenth.
We might tell our people watching on television or some of the audience that the work session Tuesday night, you did go over these in more detail, so this is not the first time you have seen these. Special courses and addendum requests. Instruction department is requesting permission to amend the application to offer credit for special courses under the following guidelines. Rule 520-1-3-05-2A, local school systems may offer special courses not listed in 521-3.06 on an experimental basis. The commissioner of education must approve each course in advance each year. After three years, the course may become permanent part of the local school program upon approval by the state board of education. After three years, the special course request must be resubmitted if the teacher listed on the application changes. Recommend approval, motion to approve Rutherford County amending application for new special courses to be offered in the named schools in 2013-14 as presented. Mr. Zago followed up with your request and sent that to the high school principal, so did that this week. And the other ones were again, some for Stewart's Creek High School, especially the dental, which is a new program.
Move for adoption.
A motion by Mr. Holliday.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Nickle. Any further discussion on this? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Fourteenth.
Is facilities. School of the Year for Excellence in Architectural Design. The Tennessee School Boards Association's annual convention is November 9th through 11th, 2013, at the Gaylord Opryland Resort and Convention Center. The president of the TSBA appoints a panel of judges to consider nominations and make the final selection for four categories of excellence in architectural design. New school construction, elementary, middle, and junior, and high division, and high school division, and the renovation and remodeling. All judging will be done prior to the convention this year. Participating architectural firms will have a booth and space in the annual convention exhibit hall and display all of their firm's public school architectural work. In accordance with TSBA policy, entries may include any building that was, that was or will be occupied between November 1st, 2010, and November 1st, 2013. Local board of education approval is necessary for all entries. The deadline for submitting entry forms along with the required information and the appropriate fees to TSBA is September 30th, 2013. Stewart's Creek High School fits into this time slot. Awards will be made based solely on the material and information provided to the judges. In past years, Rutherford County School Board has received awards from the Tennessee School Boards Association for Siegel Middle School by Gould Turner Group in 2002, Siegel High School by Binkley Garcia Architects in 2004, and Stewart's Creek Elementary School with Binkley Garcia Architects in 2007. Recommend approval, motion to approve submittal of Stewart's Creek High School to the Tennessee School Boards Association as an entry into the School of the Year for Excellence in Architectural Design for 2013. Binkley Garcia Architects will submit the entry form and materials to TSBA.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Blair, Ms. Blankenship, seconded, correct? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. B.
B is a Smyrna Middle School Kitchen Hood Design and Construction Management Proposal. Hawke Mechanical has submitted a construction management design proposal at the request of the Rutherford County Schools Engineering and Construction Department for the removal and replacement of the kitchen hood located at Smyrna Middle School. The total budget cost of the kitchen hood design and replacement is $137,000. The cost includes the design and installation of a new exhaust hood system. This would be a new hood, exhaust supply risers, filters, electrical roofing, fire suppression system, gas valve, upblast exhaust, and make-up air with natural gas reheat, modulating energy management system, factory startup, electrical ceiling, appliance relocation, and site cleanup. Site surveys, submittal of design documents, and submission for review by the state fire marshal and associated permits. Hawke Mechanical completed the kitchen hood replacements at eight schools in 2007, 2008, and was previously completed all HVAC renovations in the past eight years. Rutherford County Schools Engineering and Construction Department is convinced and confident that this is the appropriate, timely, and least expensive approach to this project. Recommend approval, motion to approve Smyrna Middle Kitchen Hood Design and Construction Management Proposal submitted by Hawke Mechanical in the amount of $137,000, which includes all work associated with the design and replacement of the kitchen hood system located at Smyrna Middle School.
Move to approve.
A motion by Mr. Holliday and a seconded by Ms. Blankenship. Any further discussion on this? I'll just make comments like I did the other night. If I'm not mistaken, this comes out of cafeteria fund, correct? And the money in the cafeteria fund, you've got to spend it on equipment stuff, correct? Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number 15.
15 is a student discipline appeal. The board has been requested to review the decision of the disciplinary hearing authority, DHA, to uphold the expulsion of a student from Blackman High School. The student was expelled for one calendar year under the board's zero tolerance policy for possessing marijuana on school property. This review is pursuant to the provisions of Policy 6.317. The policy states that the board shall review the record or the report and shall, one, affirm the decision of the DHA, or overturn the decision of the DHA, or modify the decision of the DHA to a lesser penalty, except in cases of zero tolerance violations, or, four, grant a second hearing, which would be before the board, or five, deny a request for a board hearing.
Move to affirm the decision of the DHA.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Blair and a seconded by Mr. Holliday. Any further discussion on this? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number 16.
16 is the termination of tenured teacher appointment of an independent hearing officer. The director of schools has sustained charges against Brenda Mathis, a tenured teacher from Smyrna Middle School. State law allows a tenured teacher to have a hearing before an impartial hearing officer if he or she chooses to contest the termination of his or her employment. Ms. Mathis has requested a hearing and the board of education therefore needs to appoint someone to serve as a hearing officer in this matter. Mr. Toby Gilli has expressed his willingness to serve in this capacity, if selected to do so by the board. Mr. Gilli is a local practicing attorney and has served in this capacity previously. Recommend approval, motion to approve the appointment of Toby Gilli as the impartial hearing officer for the termination hearing of Brenda Mathis.
So moved.
Second. Got a motion by Mr. Young, a seconded by Mr. Blair. Any further discussion?
Mr. Toby Gilli is a personal friend of mine and while I'll vote in favor, it is only a reflection of the interest for the school system and not a personal statement.
True, he's a friend of mine, but yeah, it's like Mr. Holliday said, I think he's the.
True, he's a friend of mine, but yeah, it's like, uh, Mr. Holliday said, he's, I think he's the right man for the job.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number 17.
Number 17 is the Expect More, Achieve More Coalition. And this was, uh, brought to your attention Tuesday night. Recommend approval, motion to approve for Rutherford County Schools to make application to join the coalition that the state collaborative on reforming education, or SCORE, is helping to lead called Expect More, Achieve More. Rutherford County Chamber of Commerce and probably 150 others are a part of this organization.
Move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Holliday and a second by Ms. Blankenship on this. Any further discussion?
I think it's important to note that the director has brought this to the board, uh, and was very conscientious to seek board approval as we go into, uh, this organization. And, uh, personally, from my board seat, I'm interested in impacting this organization and the way it affects, uh, education and the decisions that are made on education, as opposed to this organization having some impact on Rutherford County. I think we have something to bring to this organization. And Mr. Odom made the point on Tuesday evening, uh, that we can achieve more by being a part of this organization, uh, and the, uh, greater impact that it potentially has.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number 18, general discussion.
There were a number of things this evening, uh, that I saw along the way. Uh, and yet I want to start by making a comment about the decorum at our meeting. We are very fortunate here. I've attended some other meetings and it's no disrespect to any other elected body in our county, but, uh, there are no, uh, officers of the law, no SROs, uh, here at the boardroom in order to, uh, keep the peace. Uh, I think our chairman does an excellent job of conducting our meetings and, uh, and officiating. I would point out to the public, though, that it's this general discussion period at the end of the meeting where a lot of times, uh, the board is at liberty and will take the opportunity to make comments. And so if you attend a board meeting or if you're watching on television, uh, this is the good part, uh, at the end. And, uh, so hang in there till the end, uh, to, to get those board comments. It is by tradition, as well as the, uh, wisdom of our chairman, that a lot of times the board may wait and address the situation at the end of the meeting, uh, rather than when a topic may come up. Uh, as a consequence, our board meetings are, uh, maybe a, a model of, uh, of excellent decorum. So, um, the rezoning in the Blackman area, we've done, uh, a nice job with that. And I think the comments that were made tonight by the visitors, uh, are excellent. And I appreciate, uh, their involvement, not only to express their concerns, but then to come back at the end and say, "Thank you for what you've done." Uh, I very much appreciate your, uh, seeing that all the way through and coming with that. But you're exactly right. It may be an ongoing issue that we may have to revisit again. We, on Tuesday night, we did get the opportunity to, uh, acknowledge the state championships at Riverdale High School. Uh, and I thought that that was, uh, something that we wanted to make sure, if you only tuned in for the board meeting, we gave a thumbs up to those, uh, those who accomplished a great deal.
Thanks, Mr. Holliday.
Anybody else? I.
Go ahead.
I just want to add the same comments. Uh, we've got folks all the way back here from the, the days of Reston Hope Road, Stewart's Creek High School, that, uh, are continuing to attend meetings and, and hopefully it says kind of what Mr. Holliday has indicated, that, that we have done our due diligence about it, at least trying to be upfront and open and, and try to make people understand where our decisions have to come from. All that said, City of Murfreesboro hadn't stepped up and chosen to, you know, build that school. We, we would not, we've not, would not have been in a position to do what we're able to do. So we're all concerned. Glad that all worked itself out. But again, I, I really, I really do appreciate the fact that someone at least acknowledges, and I get this a lot through emails and so forth, acknowledges that, that we're trying to do the right thing and recognize the tough situation we're about to do. And, and 98% of the responses I give back are that way. There are very few times we get somebody that's just so off the rails that, uh, you just, we just have to ignore them. Yes, it's what you have to get to.
Anybody else?
I threw out one thing. About three minutes before the meeting started, Mr. Herbert came over and said, "They had to visit this week for adult education. Our proposal, you know, they asked us to take over Rutherford, uh, Cannon County as part of the proposal. We sent in our proposal and he said they came back today and said that they would not fund up to $90,000 of it." Well, I didn't know we're in a negotiations process with this. And they want an answer within three days. And this is not the Department of Education, it's the Department of Labor and Workforce Development. So, um, I'm kind of in a quandary, I guess we all are. I don't know, um, exactly where we're going to go. I, I have not even seen the document that he received today. He said there's one that's been sent to me, but we haven't received it yet, have we, Ms. Michaels? So I don't know what it says for sure, other than he did say it was 90,000 less than we discussed. And, um, the accounting department worked on that proposal also. Do you want to say anything about it? Mr. Sandby, uh, I mean, we're kind of at a loss. We didn't know that this was going to come today or.
Yeah, until we see how they're proposing to take that 90,000 out, we really don't know anything.
I mean, if we get it and have to take out the 90,000, then, um, there's obviously going to be some less services somewhere. Something has to, something's going to have to give, basically, um.
And they specifically offer three days to make a decision.
That's what he told me. And again, I have not seen that in writing yet, but, uh, that's, that's what he said. So it's a, it's a, I don't know, another state move here or something. I don't know what we're dealing with, really.
My personal opinion, I don't, I don't see how, how we can do anything on it until you find out something.
I would, I would really certainly, we tried to keep the cost the same as basically overall what it costs the system.
Well, and, and reduce that cost somewhat because we no longer can use it to help our graduation rate.
I mean, it's students going for GEDs and, and all. Now, we still have the, um, high school diploma, which is really one person there. A person can go back and get their regular high school diploma, which we do receive some funding in ADM, uh, you know, average daily membership for those. It's really quite low because it's a flex schedule. It's not like students is in school seven and a half hours a day or something like that. So, um, you know, we're, we're actually dealing with something that's not K-12 education, but trying to do something for Rutherford County. So I have not seen the document. I, I, I guess we'll try to communicate with you some by email or something what to do, but I, I'm not sure, because this hasn't been, they haven't even bid it in years. Can you ever remember?
Uh, it, there were elements that were bid-like, but it was more proposal, more proposal than a bid. And, you know, we've not had a kickback or anything, uh, of our proposal in the 15 years I've been here.
It's a whole new process too, so I, I don't, you know.
Anybody else? I'd just, I'd just like to say one thing, uh, I'd like to thank Mr. Evans today for your alert. You sent to the Oakland Middle and Oakland High School, uh, very, very well done. Uh, the way you worded it and everything, I just felt like I need to bring it up. Any further? Mr. Tackett?
Mike mentioned, uh, how well things went yesterday at the, uh, Teacher of the Year ceremony that took place out at Embassy Suites, excellent. It's so well attended and the stories that come from that are, are great. On that personal note, I, I just want to share this. Uh, Will Shelton worked with me at Laverne High School as a basketball coach and he and I coached together and so forth. And we found that one of our players, uh, has come across with breast cancer. We're going to have a chance to visit with her tomorrow. I just wanted to lift her up to those that are, are prayerful people. That we just recognize, we, we do have those kids that tug at your heartstrings, those special kids that continue to, to be in your lives. So, um, my prayers to her.
All right. As always, all mine today's. Good, Mr. Tackett?
Good to be back. I hope everybody has a safe spring break. And I know there's a lot of athletics activities happening over spring break, so I hope they all are safely attended.
That's something we ought to consider, just doing away with spring break. Mr. Hyde, you think we get away with that?
You go ahead. If there's nothing further, we're adjourned.